Trustee Thomas?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
Zappa?
All right, first order of business. It's a formality, but nevertheless, we have to do it. We need to extend the oath of office to our newest trustee, Jim Thomas, anyone who has not met him. Jim has lived down on Riverside and has replaced Jerry Panning for his eyes until last month. So, do you want to administer that?
Sure. Jim, if you'd like to raise your right hand.
I think that's enough.
Okay, you can.
What will you do?
Please raise your right hand when you think after me. I, Jim Thomas, have been appointed to the office of village trustee.
I, Jim Thomas, have been appointed to the office of village trustee.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge.
Discharge the duties of the office.
You're doing good. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So, help me God.
So, help me God. Thank you very much.
Good work.
I'd really like to say, this is an honor. Larry and I have spoken for years about trying to make this become a reality, and I appreciate this opportunity. Sorry to see Jerry Panning not on the board. I think he did a great job in his time that he was here, and I very much look forward to this. So, thank you.
Glad to have you with us.
Thank you, Jim.
I love these early acceptance days, two or six months.
Probably cursing you.
As you can see, we're a real informal group here.
I've noticed that over there.
Okay. All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting of November 1 and the regular board meeting of November 9, 2006. Any comments or corrections? Looking to my left.
I think that the captain did an outstanding job capturing the minutes of the meeting of November 1.
All right, all in favor of the motion, that's signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Minutes are approved. All right, Chair would entertain a motion to go into public hearing regarding the adoption of the 2007 budget.
I'll move.
Is there a second? Okay. I'm not sure, but I think I need a roll call vote on this. Thomas? Or Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark? Sandra?
Yes.
George? Larry? Yes, okay. All right, so we are now in public hearing regarding the 2007 budget. Is there anyone here who has any comments, questions regarding the 2007 budget?
This had been published in the Hudson Star Observer.
Been published? Copies have been made available? Is it on the website?
No.
No? It'd be a great download. Okay. None, all right. Seeing none, then, Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing regarding the 2007 budget.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Again, we'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
I'm sorry?
All in favor of the motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I move that, yes.
Yes. Colleen?
Yes.
Jim? Or Mark?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes, Marson, yes. Okay. Chair would then entertain a motion to adopt the 2007 budget.
Should I do the presentation before the adoption?
Do we need to?
It really should be, because the statute is supposed to be presented to the board in those different layouts.
How long is the budget?
Five minutes. I'm quick, I don't talk long.
Okay.
Hey.
All right, we should have a, let's see, do we have a motion to adopt the budget?
Yes.
It was yours? Who had the second on that?
Colleen.
Colleen, okay. Right, so now we're in discussion, okay? There are some statutory items that they know... Laurie wanted to cover.
Right here, to answer George's question, this is the budget that was placed in the paper for the requirement of the 15 days before a public hearing for adoption. A couple of items that you'll notice that have changed is, instead of having the Village Hall project put into the revenues and expenses, we've created a separate fund to do that so that all costs will be segregated. It'll be easier to track and keep separate from the general fund. Basically, you won't see a lot of changes in the revenue. Some of the proceeds from long-term debt has made an effect because maybe they, because we aren't borrowing and we're pulling that down. All three departments' budgets have decreased. Great job. Overall, there's very little raise. The change that you'll see in the tax levy is the difference between 2% plus loan principal and interest loan payments, and that is by state statute. So, that takes care of that. One item that I'm required to present to the board, sorry, is the long-term debt obligation. You'll see that our truck loan that's got $12,000 left on balance, our Series A that we refinanced in '05, actually, end of '04, and then some of the several smaller loans that we've gotten since. We did return $30,000, so you'll see on this one right here that it's already been reduced by that $30,500 on a project that we chose not to complete. This is also one of the items that... Thank you. It'll show the 2005 actual numbers, the 2006 budget, 2006 actual through November, projected year-end, and then the 2007 budget. And if going with that information, I'm able to come up with the village rates and overall rates. You'll see the 2006 assessed value, the equalized value. We've already, even since we just did the revale in last year, we're already down to 90%. We have our state budget amount, our county. This is the villages portion, the schools, and then our credit, which leaves us with a 14.38 mill rate overall. So, anyone have any questions? No?
The 14.38 is the total for all of those...
Yes.
...taxing agencies, not just the village. That needs to be made clear.
That's what I said, I said all.
The village mill rate.
3.3. So, if you take a $250,000 house, home, and you divide it by 1,000 assessed value, you've got $250 times 3.3, or $3.33, you'll come up with the portion of that you contribute to the village. If you take the 14 point, or $14.38, you'll come up with your total tax for your home. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Well, see, the levies are for summary purposes. The levy is up $37,000, which is 3.3%. The operating expenses for 2007 will be less than they were for 2006, and less than they were for 2005, less than they were for 2004. So, we have four successive years where the operating expenses are actually going down. That's a positive trend. One of the problems we're having is that what we call operating income, which is other than property tax, it's those other sources of revenue that come into the villages simply because we're municipality, those are down, not as a lot individually, but collectively they're down $58,000. So, in terms of, you know, why were we struggling to try and make the budget come out? That's a large part of it. So, but I commend everybody on the board, as well as the staff, for putting together a very good budget. It will be challenging, no doubt, at 2008 and beyond, that's for sure. But that is the way it's always been. So, we have a motion and a second to adopt the 2007 budget. Is there any further discussion on that?
I think it's a very good trend to be seeing things going down with the way things are in the world. It's a good job.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Sandra, start over here.
Yes.
Yes, George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any comments from the floor? Jim, you want to talk for a while?
No, I think I'm good. I'm just going to listen for a while.
I'm talking about, I'm looking at Jim O'Connor there.
Go ahead, Jim.
Or did you have an item on the agenda you want to address?
I haven't seen the agenda, but I hope it's on there about the library agreement.
Yes, it's on there.
Okay, whenever it's sort of...
Okay. All right. All right, seeing no other comments from the floor, we'll move on.
You have something else?
No, that's all I have.
Oh, okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the election clerks and inspectors, one-year appointments. We are required as municipality to appoint them in summary fashion. And Gloria's been good enough to put together a quick issue statement on that, as well as to list the individual clerks and inspectors for 2007. So, Chair would entertain a motion. Those documents are in the front.
Yeah, they're right behind, blank page behind the budget.
Gotcha.
I'll move to find the attached list of election inspectors for the term of January 1, 2007 to December 31st, first 2007.
I'll second, and I have a question. My name is on this list. I was asked to, if I would be a backup for this, and I said, as long as it's not inappropriate, and I'm assuming, I made a list, it's not inappropriate.
I just won't be able to ask you when you're running for office. If you're on the ballot, you can't work as an election inspector, and that's the issue. Yep. Okay. And I did, yeah, that was clarified. I'd like to thank all of our election inspectors and all the work that they do, especially after this last election. They work very hard, they're conscientious, and I really appreciate Hattie's good food. So...
Okay. All right, all in favor, any other further comments, questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion to accept the election clerks and inspectors as listed, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. 2007 mobile home park license at Finance. The Finance Committee recommended approval of the 2007 mobile home parking license slash permit for Pamela Zappa. I'm assuming, Mark, you'll abstain from this issue? Okay. This is simply an annual renewal process, okay? So, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the 2007 mobile home park license for Pamela Zappa?
Submerged.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay. Plan Commission, Chair update. Senior Mizer. Do you have any Chair update comments you need to provide us with?
The thing we did on our last meeting was, the Plan Commission approved the comprehensive plan onto you for your consideration tonight.
Which is the next item on the agenda.
Wonderful.
Okay. All right, go ahead, the Chair. Go ahead.
There was a time change for Plan Commission coming up?
We're going to go back to 7:00 now. We were meeting an extra half hour because it was a very time-consuming process, and now we're going to go back to 7:00 meetings. Subject to change of something really big or lots of a debt. May I have a moment?
Okay.
Okay, we need a motion then to begin the public hearing portion in order to adopt the comprehensive plan. So, Chair, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote to go into open session. Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, we are now in open session regarding the comprehensive plan. Are there any comments or corrections with respect to the comprehensive plan as submitted and recommended by the Plan Commission? Patrick, I think you just had some minor...
Just some minor things, and I don't think I've ever mentioned, so I'm Patrick Lyle Post from Cedar Corporation. Nice to work with you. Nice to meet you too. I've been working with the Plan Commission for almost two years on the comprehensive plan, and I believe Donna gave you a comment sheet from the state, a copy of it.
Yes.
So, the state, after reviewing it, said they wanted a little more information on a few areas, and what I did is, in front of you, there is a purple sheet, and on the purple sheet is what I wrote to address the missing requirements by the state, and I've given Mike a copy to look over. And basically, typically, you just need a sentence or two, or a small paragraph, to address, and they were minor. They were looking for more information about the relationship between the village and the school district, for the most part. One thing I can explain what I did briefly is, under land use, they wanted 20 projections in the amount of land use needed for four different land uses, residential, commercial, industrial, and agricultural land, and that would be on the second side of the purple sheet. And what I did is, the first column is 2006, and that would be the existing land use acreages that we had in our map. And for residential, we had, as for population projections, we calculated approximately 33 new households every five years until 2025. So, what I did was, in the text, I wrote that, at this point, we'll assume that you can get approximately three households per acre, so therefore, we needed 11 acres of new residential land within the village, and this would come from vacant land. And so, as you see, if you look across residential and add the 11 acres on in five-year increments, we get a total of 613 acres of land for residential purposes by 2025, and that corresponds with our population projection. For commercial, I added two acres on every two years. It's difficult to say when you're going to have commercial development, but I took the acreage that we showed as future commercial properties, potential, and I just divided that out. We didn't really show any growth in the industrial park. I mean, it can't grow, and we didn't really identify an area for a future industrial park, so I left that the same, and of course, there's no agricultural land in the village, so that remained the same too. So, that's the biggest thing that I think I needed to go over.
So, where were these extra 52 acres going to come from?
Well, you have...
Annexation?
No, I mean, you have all this not planted. I mean, it's undeveloped. It may be planted, but this is more than enough.
Okay.
And what we did, to figure out how many households we needed in the future, I think we looked at the maximum model lots you could probably get on that land, and then we looked at wastewater treatment plant capacity to come up with that. So, you do have enough vacant land within the village to meet our population projections that we agreed upon.
Because what do we say we have? What are we projecting that we have in terms of developable lots?
I think it was approximately, we figured out about 130.
130, okay.
And then what I have to do with this is, you know, if you, what you can do tonight, if you choose to do so, you can adopt the plan contingent upon the okay from the state on us addressing their comments.
Would all of this content be, become a part of...
In the plan, yes. And I, at the bottom of each section, I put where I included it in the plan.
Okay. All right.
It's nothing that changes the focus or the meaning of the plan.
No, and I understand, just thinking, in terms of the motion, it is simply that the Board would be adopting the motion, or would be adopting the comprehensive plan as submitted by Plan Commission with these attachments.
Sure.
Okay.
And what I'll do is, because the grant closeout date is the end of the year, they've assured me that as soon as I get this to them, they'll respond within a few days.
I understand that there were a number of changes that were recommended, and that they're not all included in here.
I think, I think we made some changes out of the last Plan Commission meeting, but I did not have them in that updated draft. And Donna, Donna called me and went over some things, and I had it in the Word document, because she was pointing out, you know, you didn't get this in, and I said, well, I have it here. What I believe I did was, when I first printed those out, I turned everything into a PDF format, and then it's easier for me to print out all those copies. And after our last Plan Commission meeting, those, I didn't return, I didn't take the updated document to turn it into a PDF. I think I used the previous one. So, I don't know if you had anything specific.
The Village Center, is this the Village Center? Or is there proposal to build a Village Center outside of the Village Hall?
No, I think the Village Center, I... I think there were two things. There was kind of a Village Center that could be the Town Hall, and then there was kind of a commercial center also. I think there was some, maybe some confusion on how we use the wording.
Mm-hmm, there is confusion.
Could you, could you read the whole thing for me? So, I can understand the context.
Identify future, this is overall comprehensive plan goals.
Mm-hmm.
One of the comments I had here is that every page should be numbered so we can reference it easier, but be that as it may. Number two, identify potential areas for a future Village Center. And so, I wondered, what's this?
Well, I think we, at a joint meeting, we talked about that, and I think for a governmental center, it kind of was decided this is where it was going to be. And then we talked about a commercial center, which, there were two options. One was possibly redevelopment of the shopyards, or where we have commercial development, some vacant lands north of the, north end of the village. And I think those are pointed out, I think those are referenced within the text.
Okay. At our last, I think that we had that joint board and Plan Commission meeting. And that issue was raised there as well, what exactly was enough by that. I mean, there were certainly some decisions, well, wouldn't it be nice if we were to buy that land at the end of, as you're leaving town on 35, that current open lot, put a Village Hall and complex there. And then there was discussion about that option versus, you know, just adding on to the Village Hall as well, and for economic reasons, I mean, in the short term, it makes more sense to do this. Now, this always will be an asset that could be potentially, you know, a future option. Doesn't preclude us from doing that. Don't think it'll ever become the public working building, but, so, yeah, that was discussed, and then the other concept of, is, wouldn't it be nice to have like a Village Center? You know, kind of like a downtown area, but just, you know, the way we're laid out, it just doesn't lend itself to that too well, so. So, I think the Plan Commission did an excellent job of just working with the realities that are a part of the village. For all intents and purposes, we are pretty much developed, and we've got very, very little land, so, you know. Okay, did you ask mother?
Is there an Appendix A?
There will be in the final draft.
I would spend a lot of time looking for Appendix A.
Does it reference the, what does that one reference? I mean, I don't recall.
Public participation resolution passed by the Village Board can be seen in Appendix A.
Right.
So, I wondered what I had passed, if it had been done.
Oh. I usually include, the appendices are typically, I'll put like the results of the Citizen Advisory Board and the survey in the back, and the adopted ordinance and the public participation plan. I normally don't include those in the draft.
But you want us to, but you want us to approve this document?
Correct. But I, I guess my thought was, the appendices don't change the content of the comprehensive plan. It's things that were passed already, or, like I said, the survey results, or the Citizen Advisory Board results. It would be in the final document that you get, and there should be a copy here, if, because it was a resolution that was passed, I believe.
That was what we passed early on during the process, right? That we would incorporate...
Right, in the very beginning.
Public input during, throughout the whole process?
Yes.
Okay.
But it makes sense. I mean, I understand.
I wish I'd been here for previous, the last one, I had to be out of town.
Sure.
I wish I'd been here, but I won't go on.
Okay. I mean, obviously, if you were picking this thing up for the first time and trying to read it, you know, you'd go nuts.
I did.
Okay. Whereas, this is now the third draft, because we've got two joint Plan and Board meetings to go over it, and I certainly wanted to commend the Plan Commission for sticking with this monster, because it's been 20 months in making. They took it on, which a lot of communities hire consultants to do the whole process, and the fact that they took that activity on, did that work, saved us a lot of money, plus the fact that we were doing it in concert with two of the surrounding townships, allowed us to apply, you know, grant money, which Patrick at Cedar Corp was good enough to help us get, so the total cost of the plans certainly came in a lot less, I think. What was our actual projected cost of the plan? Around $35,000, $50,000?
I think first we estimated $50,000 and then ended up with $30,000.
I know the original estimate that we were told to put in the budget was $125,000.
Jesus, could have made a movie.
Okay. That was with higher, that's what, if the Plan Commission hadn't stepped up to the plate, so I commend them highly for doing that.
One of the things, I'm not even sure that it's even something that would be in a document of this type, but as I read it, I just saw dollar signs all over, but there were no dollars associated with some of the recommendations. And I think it would be absolutely overwhelming if dollars were to be... And I think it would be absolutely overwhelming if dollars were to be attached to or calculated on, you know, by the year 2010, if all of this was accomplished, the cost would be, and I think it would be staggering. Such things as developing a transportation system in a village that's less than two miles from one end to the other. I don't wonder about a transportation system, and developing Village Centers. And you look at these, appropriating or buying land for future use of such and such, way out there.
Sure.
And so I think, although the plan, you know, this is a lot of pie in the sky. When you look at it, the reality is that we could not afford to do the majority of the things in here. There are some sure we can do, and some of the things we look at and would consider as we build it, or these fifty-two acres that you proposed or looked at. But I hope that this is taken on, wow, wouldn't that be interesting? Wouldn't that be nice?
Typically, you're encouraged not to put dollar amounts to it and then say, we can't do it. When you work on your comprehensive plan, you're supposed to, whether they're feasible or not, put down what you think are good ideas, and some of them you may achieve and some you may not. I think sometimes there's a little misunderstanding when you say, and we changed the wording. In the past, it said goals, objectives, and then policies, programs, and actions. And we changed it to options to achieving the goals, because there was concern that, do we have to do all these things? And as, within the Plan Commission, when we were coming up with these, we were looking at things that we thought were reasonable to do, or reasonable options to achieve the goals, not based on whether we can afford them or not. So with the transportation system, that was brought up because the state and a regional group is looking at getting passenger rail through the system, through the area. And I know we made some references to the use of the shopyards, if it was ever redeveloped, or it could be something like a rail connection or something like that. I mean, those, I think those are reasonable options. Yes, they'd be terribly expensive, but I, I think they're, they're good ideas to support.
Obviously, I've had quite a little bit of reading to do the last couple of weeks, but I did actually have the opportunity to skim through this and make compliments. There's definitely a lot of work put into it. I agree with George on a couple of things, and as far as transportation, obviously, it appears that our village is destined to be walking and taking bicycles within the village for quite a while, but that's all wonderful. But little things that struck me, just, and I know that this is a final draft, things can change, but like, if we were to ever put up welcome signs into the Village of North Hudson, the one coming down from the north, that's no problem at all, but it appears that the one from the south is basically in the Malibu Bar parking lot, and it seems like it's just a little bit out of place. I'm sure there's a few typos that we will be correcting as time goes on.
And that was just to show general location.
Okay.
Because we know definitely to the south it would be difficult to find a spot.
Okay.
There's that apartment building sign.
And I mean, realistically, it's nitpicking, and obviously, I haven't had the opportunity to read this word for word, but it is basically a very well-done job.
I think the thought there was generally, it'd be nice to have entrance signs to the village.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. And I do agree, though, with George, there is, there's a few issues that, you know, a nice little bow to tie it all together, assuming that that will happen to pull it all together. I think it's a very, very well-done piece.
We'll have a checklist as we, you know, for some of these things, and as they're accomplished, check them off, because there's quite a few things in here we're already doing.
Sure.
But one of the things I was amused by, the village is responsible for the maintenance of the water mains and the hydrants. Well, well, not too sure about that, because we rent the fire hydrants.
Yeah, we still maintain them.
We have to maintain them? I thought the fire department comes in and drains them.
Fire Department does not maintain hydrants in any, you know, that's done by local water utility.
Thank you.
At least in State or Council, because the water utility doesn't maintain the hydrants in the mains, not the fire.
Thank you for that. Yeah. And that's what I always under the impression from best experiences. All right, good.
As the fire department does, they come and ask us the own hydrant, so we maintain yearly when they ask us, so they expect to make sure we are maintaining.
Oh, so they inspect them to make sure we're maintaining them?
Well, no, they come and ask us how much maintenance we've done.
Okay. Well, which is...
To make sure they're all working. Unless you want it for a warranty time, for them to go to fire and have it frozen.
Frozen, right.
But your idea, George, is actually part of, several members of the Plan Commission at the last meeting had suggested that there be kind of like a checklist that we could check off over the next several years, as we tick off some of these items. Okay? Any other comments or not? Or comments or questions? Okay? If not, then the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close.
Second. We gotta separate you two.
All right, we need a roll call vote to do that. Start over here. Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, yes. All right, public hearing is closed. And then on the Plan Commission section of your book, on the second page, there's a suggested motion there.
I'm going to do that, ordinance number four dash two zero zero six, contingent on all corrections slash changes being made to the final copy of the comprehensive plan that was submitted to the Village Board in compliance with the letter dated December one, two thousand and six from the State Department of Administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further comments? Okay. All favor of the motion, then signify by saying aye. We'll do a roll call vote. Start over here. Jim?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Arrgh.
Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
All right, yes. Mike, on behalf of all of us, we thank you for getting the plan done. It's a great task. Oh, let's see. In fact, that pretty much takes care of everything under Plan Commission. I know Mike probably wants to go home. If I can just beg the boards' forgiveness and get out of order for a second, move down to item number fifteen. Daryl Score, who is currently the Chair of the Plan Commission, has just recently had surgery and will not be able to continue in his capacity. Mike has been surrogate chair several times in Daryl's absence over the last couple of years. And so I am recommending that Mike Meiser replace Daryl as the Chair of the Plan Commission, completing his designated term. So that is my motion, and Mark has seconded it. Okay.
Thank you for taking that on.
Yes.
Now, will Gloria, after we pass this, would he be administered an oath of office?
God, I hope not.
We didn't tell him, this is a lifetime appointment.
Who's life?
It's one of the few. All right, so, all in favor of the nomination signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Mike, thank you very much for everything and for continuing to go forward. We appreciate it. If you want to go to your family, certainly welcome. All right, coming back to the agenda and the order, Finance Committee. For claims, the Finance Committee recommended approval of the November claims. So the chair would entertain a motion.
I approve that we approved the November non-recurring claims totaling thirteen thousand, two, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll second.
Anyone have any comments? Excuse me. Anyone have any comments on the claims? Okay, if not, then we'll vote, and this has to be a roll call. Start over here. Sandra?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion is approved. For the vacation and comp time carryover, as you may have noticed, it was comp time. We had substantial discussion in the Finance Committee, saying we'd like not to see people being pressed so hard that they can't use the comp time, and so they can't use their vacation time. By the same token, we certainly don't want to deny them or take away that they're earning the time off. So the Finance Committee did recommend approval of the suggested carryover. So the chair would entertain a motion, and I do for no other reason, so we can discuss the issue.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Okay. Two thousand, two thousand and seven equipment and hourly staff rates, which are the rates for the equipment and for staff when they are engaged in work for which somebody will be billed. Gloria put that set of data together along with the rest of the staff. Represents a slight increase from prior years. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and seven equipment and hourly staff service rates.
I'll move approval.
I'll just start with that.
Any comments or questions regarding it? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same side. Motion carried. Two thousand and seven amendment to the Joint Library Agreement, approval requested. The library agreement, this is referred to as the second addendum, right? Addendum, not addendum. Simply allows participating communities the opportunity, if they wish to back out of the agreement, with one year's notice, rather than two, as is currently provided. So for purposes of discussion, the chair would entertain a motion, and a second, then we have a discussion. I'm sure Jim wants to deal with something.
You want a second, you said?
Uh, you can...
I'll move approval of the second addendum to the Joint Library Agreement.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay. Jim, did you want to...
Thank you. A pretty clear face there, is that the agreement presently drafted has had the the one-year cancellation clause up until this time. At the end of the year, it's considered to go into a two-year withdrawal provision. One of the towns expressed some reservations about that, and so to preclude any issue, the Library Board is proposing continuing with the one-year withdrawal provision in the assumption that the Joint Library will go forward, and this is just to keep everybody comfortable with it. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to address them.
If any municipal is indicating any interest in withdrawing?
No, not interested in withdrawing, George. They were just on ease about the two-year commitment, and there really is no cause for it, in that the agreement we have now is just for operating funds only. There's no, it, we'll have to have a new agreement when we get to a capital situation. But still, there was some discomfort with it. So that's what we propose to overcome that discomfort.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions, or Jim, just related to the operation of the library?
Can you explain something on here, the, what expense per circulation means in this dollar figure?
Yes, I'd like to go over that overview I've given you. There are four main elements to it. Starting off with, there is a very strong demand for library services from residents in this area. Library usage has doubled in the last six years. Twelve percent a year compounded. It's pretty remarkable that it's doubled in just six years. There are now nine hundred and thirty items a day going out of the library. Tomorrow, next year, rather, it'll be a thousand items a day, a thousand books a day going out of that library. That's a lot of circulation.
Sitting here thinking this thing.
All of them. Possibly yours.
Where is the library?
Right next to where the jail used to be.
Wait a minute, you guys set this up.
It's the hazards of when we know each other too well.
And coming to your question, Sandra, the library is being run very efficiently. The, the operating cost divided by the circulation, it's two dollars each for everything going out of there. Versus, what, three thirty-nine, I think it is, on state average, so we are way below, way more efficient than the state comparisons. And going with that, then the next item is the circulation per employee. Here again is far more efficient than the state average, so the people are very busy down there. And the result of all that efficiency is that we have very low tax rates here. You'll see that the per capita support of the library here is less than half the state average, so we're, we're really pinching pennies there. And also, the tax rate is way below half. Twenty-one cents per thousand is written in the agreement versus fifty-seven for the state average, so we're way below there also. The downside of all this good news is, the last item, is that our residents are being underserved. We don't have near enough books. We are way too crowded there. We need much more space, and we're operating with very limited staff. That's, that's overview of where we're at, and you all received earlier a copy of our consultant's report in the summer that we needed a lot more detail about the facility that we need versus what we have, and what the kind of facility we should have for our population area. This is just a thumbnail sketch of that information.
Tim, I do have to comment, the staff there is really fantastic, and they're very helpful. But I do agree with your, your assessment here, that when I request books, they usually are through the interlibrary loan. It seems that Hudson has very few of the current volumes that I'm looking for.
That is a problem. We recognize that.
Yeah, it seems like Hudson is unable to hold up their part, I'm possibly, you know, based on the size or whatever.
There's a lot of demand for current titles. There is. We have hard time keeping up with it.
Oddly, they seem to come from the smallest towns, though, the ones I request, the current titles.
What Sandra's referring to is that we are in a consortium of about ten counties in this part of the state that have interlibrary loan. And there's a van that runs around daily, delivering the books between the libraries. And you can go online, or go to the library, either one, and order the books. You can search all the books by any subject, title, author, however you want to do it, online. Order them from, you can see which libraries have them. If we don't have them, they'll have them in Rysley, Kynanomie, or wherever it'll be. And you can order them in.
Put yourself on the way.
And you'll get an automated phone call in two days. And you'll get an automated phone call, two days later, saying your books in Hudson, pick it up. It's a great service for the public, because it gives you access to a whole lot more books than we can possibly have here, and of course, we send them out to other places, too, but we are a net borrower.
I'm assuming that's the whole reason for becoming part of the consortium?
It is.
So that no one facility is expected to maintain a comprehensive set of volumes? Yes, it would be nice, but by making the phone call, you can have, you can have a book delivered in forty-eight hours.
Yep.
Jim, what is the tax that, I'm going to use the word tax, that the Hudson library has to pay for being a member of that consortium, I'm sure it doesn't come for free?
We do pay fees, because there is a staff, and we're clear that administers this, it's a state-sponsored organization, whole state's divided up into these, these library groups. Federated library systems are called, but we're paying twelve to fifteen thousand a year, is my recollection, in that area, which covers all this, the book courier system, and also, there is a small, it also supports our, a common database system, this is all based on. It supports the, the database systems that's on, this also provides our team one line for all the public computers there, and support staff, that is just all the librarians in professional technical matters.
Jim, do they track the average age, like, on a chart? Who's, who's using the library predominantly these days?
Everybody.
High school?
Everybody, we have a very strong children's program, with programs for all ages. We have team groups, we have a book club that meets regularly and's for book discussion. Our students, like high school particularly, use the computers and word processors in the library, which we need far more of, we don't need more space for them, and it's right up on to senior citizens, everybody.
They probably track this somehow, so that a person would be able to gain access to it?
There is, no, there's no database relating to age.
Yeah, I look at the numbers of twenty-seven thousand books for the Hudson, based on the Wisconsin average of nineteen, and it seems like there's a potential for a lot of employee stress there.
Well, there is some, but we are proud of our staff, they do well, but they're very busy. In fact, well, this year, we put in two, three M, wanted me to sell checkout systems, now you don't have to go to the desk clerk to get it checked out, you put your library card in the machine, wave the barcode thing under the reader, and it prints out a slip, is acknowledging your checkout and what it's due, and you can do it all yourself, but that's one of the efficiency-type things we're working on. Be able to buy one, and you get three M to give us the other one.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we've still got a lot of items on the agenda for tonight. Okay, thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
And you gave a motion on the amendment, on the floor.
We already have it on the floor.
Assuming, assuming it passes, I'd like to authenticate tonight, and I take it for the towns on Thursday.
Oh, sure, sure.
It's just different than what I was given.
The polls have got down to the staff in City Hall, since they got a full-time professional staff that looks at all these things, they had a minor wording change, but it says the same thing. They called an amendment instead of an addendum.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think what she was also saying was-
Our, our motion was to approve the second addendum to the joint library, so maybe the motion needs to be, I'm not sure.
Let's draw the motion.
Or amend it.
Uh, it's just, we, we can just do an agreed-upon change in the motion, it's to approve the amendment to the joint library agreement. The language doesn't change, that's all. So if both the, person who made the motion and the second agree to that?
I'll agree.
Georgia, you have the second.
So this is changed to amendment?
The only thing that changed was at the top, in the pack, it says second addendum, and on, and the one that we're actually passing, it says amendment.
And here's my, you think they got sharp people in Hudson, okay, I want to know what the first one was.
The first one was, and that was, the reason it was addendum, they tell me, is because that added to the agreement, that was when for oh-six and oh-seven, you limited the increase to two percent, which is really starting to pinch us in oh-seven.
It's pinching us, too, Jim.
Yeah, I know, but maybe-
Because what, that was, that was, that was, I'm assuming, the first addendum to the joint library agreement, and this, so this made sense to be the second addendum.
The distinction they claim is that that was in addition, but this is a change.
Right, but it's not the second, it's the first amendment.
And this just does say-
Simply an amendment, period.
Is it the first amendment?
No, this says a amendment, it doesn't say-
Then we can, then it's okay. We'll let it go.
We're glad it passes. No, it doesn't, I said that.
Oh, you said that, okay. Okay, Tom.
So they could go.
I got it, baby.
Okay, so what we're voting on here is an amendment to the, to the joint library agreement. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of the agreement, of the change in the amendment to the joint library agreement, say so by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carried, okay. All right, moving on to the two thousand seven, thank you, Jim. Finance Committee is also recommending approval of the two thousand seven EMS ambulance contract with the city of Hudson. I think in round numbers, that was like twenty-five, five, per year.
Twenty-five, eight, thirty-seven.
Twenty-five, eight. That's a pretty good deal.
Second.
Can I just point out one change that should be in there, there's a reference in the middle of that agreement to, that this is an intergovernmental agreement, which used to be always referred to as the sixty-six thirty agreements, because that was a section of the statutes, but back in two thousand one, they renumbered the statutes, and it's no longer sixty-six thirty, it's sixty-six point zero-three-zero-one. Because they renumbered the entire chapter sixty-six, so that, that should be changed, point zero-three-zero-one.
I'll have a copy of the state statutes with me.
I didn't either, but I went and looked before here, just because I knew it had been changed, I just didn't know what the new number was.
Is that right? Well, I have to leave something up to the attorney.
That's right, otherwise, no reason to be here.
Otherwise, yeah, well, I'd sit in that chair.
Any comments or questions regarding the-
Can I make one other comment, then?
Yes.
As long as we're looking at this, the, is, is everybody clear on, on the changes that are on paragraph four, which, it appeared to me that they were taking out the capital equipment reserve account, because that shows in the comments there on the right as being deleted? But then, right below that, it then refers to the capital reserve account, is that something different than the capital equipment reserve account? And then, you know, it talks about that up here in section A, but then down below in, in C, D, and E, it takes out the word capital, and I'm just wondering, is there a reserve account, a capital reserve account, and a capital equipment reserve account, which has been deleted? It just, it didn't seem to me to be consistent, and I, I didn't know enough about it to know whether there are those different accounts, or whether, it just was a little bit inaccurate in the editing. And it, because the change at the top in, in section four appears to say, you know, the underlying language would be the new language, and it says that additional revenues may be required to support both operating and capital funds, which, and then, based on the deletion of the capital equipment reserve account, seemed to say to me that, well, instead of having a capital account, we're just going to have a reserve account that's both for operating and for capital, which is fine, but then, the very next paragraph, it starts talking about the capital reserve account, which seemed to me to be something they just deleted.
I think they are trying to just have one reserve account rather than two.
That's-
Because they, later on in the agreement, it provides for, in the event that the reserve account gets large enough, they could use that to actually reduce the payments for the participating-
For the operations.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Then I guess my sense would be that another edit or change would be that in paragraph four A, where it talks about capital reserve account, that's, you know, they've eliminated capital all the way down as they've gone through, they should probably take capital out of that paragraph, so it would just say the annual reserve account assessments, as opposed to capital, if it's just going to be a reserve account generally.
Basically, what you're saying is they missed one of the capitals.
Yeah. And the other thing, I was just uncertain whether they're going to have more than one account, or, and I think the intention is, it appears to me to have one account, and that's fine, it just didn't seem to be, to be consistent through the document. So I, I think that that word should come out of there as well, and then it's consistent.
It would be yours.
Yeah, I'm just kind of trying to get a grasp on the difference between those two, but yeah, he's saying remove that. Yeah, it does seem like that that's what they're-
I think that's what they intended, and I think they just missed one.
I'm surprised that Hudson Sharpies didn't catch, you know what I mean?
Let's be nice.
I didn't say that.
Oh, no, I picked up what Jim was saying early.
All right, so let's see then, the motion would be to approve the agreement with the one modification on page two, line three, no, line, or paragraph eight, four A.
And?
And the statutory reference.
Okay, and the statutory reference.
And I'll second that.
Have you at least got the gist of that, Kathy?
Yeah.
All right.
I think it should just be noted that item five, which talks about the finances, I for one am, I think we're getting a good deal here, the per capita capital fund, there's that capital again. So, I would raise the question, do we want to delete it from item five also? It doesn't change the essence of the statement, though, the per capita capital fund assessment for the year two thousand seven shall be seven dollars per person. And I think that, that's a good price for peace of mind that we have that service. The continuation of that sentence is for a total of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and that's based on a population in the village of three thousand six hundred and ninety-one.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. And the two thousand seven Hudson area joint fire contract, the Finance Committee is recommending approval of the contract, Chair would entertain a motion. Any comments, questions regarding the contract itself? Any corrections, or inappropriate state references, statutory references?
Looks good to me.
George, how much is eighty-one thousand dollars per person?
Fifty bucks. Thirty-six ninety-one.
Twenty-two.
They have bigger trucks.
More of them, too.
More what?
More of them, too.
More of them, too.
Okay.
Your garage.
Seeing no other comments, all in favor, or any, have any more comments, I'm not trying to race things. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. And an agreement with our building inspector, one-year term. Fees are the same. Did we change anything in there? Oh, okay, we'll just correct it, that's a typo, um, done, consequence, okay. Any other comments or questions regarding the building inspector? The truly corrected copy. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried, okay. Cedar Corporation Agreement. Second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
The motion is for the amendment, is that correct? To the contract?
Yes.
Agreement to amend. Commend and extend and-
Which, is that Public Works? Yes, the agreement to amend and extend the engineering services agreement. Any other comments? In case anyone was watching and wondering if we're just racing through these agreements, it's, it's not, we had a rather lengthy discussion in finance, over all of them. Cedar Corp along with just everybody else was there, so. All right, all in favor of the motion to amend and continue the contract, extend the contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right, Public Works, Mark, are you filling in for, for Joe?
I am. One item we need to hold on, and that is the hiring of some part-time employees. These are individuals that are strictly part-time, that there's an hourly, or a, there is a cap as to total hours that they're going to be running. I think the cumulative cap is like five hundred hours for three.
For, for part-time personnel.
For part-time, yeah.
Basically-
Basically, what's in the budget for 2007 is $2,000, but basically, personal thing, that's roughly 142 point of hours.
What you're asking the board to approve is simply really the three individuals that you will use during the course of the year.
Yes, and it's, it's the-
It's already budgeted.
Yeah, it's already budgeted. The procedure has already been approved. It's just now we have three specific names.
Yep. Okay. So we should have, we need a recommendation on the three names.
Yeah, we have Adam Bjornstedt, Duane Bonzie, and Brent Jensen. And I just, I recommend that the, those three individuals be hired as part-time employees to assist in snow plowing during the 2006, 2007 snow season.
Is there a second?
Was a determination made whether they were going to be part-time or subcontracted? I know they'll be available at a phone call. Does that make any difference here at all?
We're going to leave that to Mark and Gloria to determine which, under both state statute as well as applicable state laws, which way to treat them. Basically, they're all part-time or temporary. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Jim? Okay. Okay, all in favor of hiring the three named individuals as temporary employees to work in Public Works when as needed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. St. Croix Tree Service?
Basically, it's a request. After request of the village administrator, I contacted Dennis Olm of St. Croix Tree Service, who's had the contract here since 1990. Dennis expressed to me at this time they're not willing to renegotiate the contract as is, basically because the contract, none of the rates have been increased since 1990.
What's his point?
Basically, what I was told is that the only way they would look at renegotiating the contract with the village is if the rate's doubled. So at that time, this is actually, as a, by, talking to Gloria and anybody else, I explained this to her, this doesn't actually come under Public Works, this is actually under public welfare, so I don't know if you want Public Works to continue running with the ball regarding finding a tree contract or negotiating a tree contract, or if you do want it to go to public welfare.
So the bottom line is, we don't have an agreement to approve.
No, there is no agreement to approve.
All right, so that-
Yeah, we had a couple other items at Public Works that were discussed that we don't have to vote on, but just information. One is, the plan commission had asked Public Works to look at some storms who were traps in a couple areas around the village, and, and we hadn't at this time, we don't have a reasonable solution, and not going to take any action with that sort of activity right now. The other item was the St. Croix Station road repair, and we're going to, the engineers and the superintendent are going to look at that road a little closer, and again, we haven't decided on what to do with that, and that'll develop over the course of the next couple months. But just indicate they are not forgotten, but we don't have any recommendations at this time. I would like to add, just briefly, that somewhere along the line between, perhaps between now and next April, and this is not a reflection of Public Works solely me, is I'd like to see something with that referendum limit be addressed somehow, just as a motion.
Right, anything else under Public Works?
That's it right now.
Public Safety?
It's like a rather brief meeting on the November ninth, but out of that, we do have the recommendation to capitalize $2,000 for the purchase of installation of an LED light bar, light bar for one of our squads. As you can read in the background on the issue statement, one of the issues that we have is that these old light bars just are drawing so much current, they're eating up our alternators. Mark, would you, is there any more we need to say besides what they see in the issue statement here? Does that capture it pretty much? So it's, and that, would that be on that, that's on a new squad, isn't it? Or is that, help me out, is that replacing an existing one?
It's replacement.
Yeah, replacement, okay. And that's in the budget for, I would just make that motion to capitalize $2,000 for the purchase and installation of an LED light bar for squad nine fifteen.
I, wasn't that done already?
I think you guys approved that.
Yeah, it's-
We did, within-
In public safety.
In public safety. We don't need to.
I think we took care of it at the board with the last budget meeting.
Okay.
Because it's not formally on the agenda to, because it's already been approved.
Yep.
All right. There is a contract that you'll see in your board packet for the AIA document B-151-1997. And what this is, as we started to read this, a few of us, we go, yeah, right. This is a boilerplate for the architectural firm for the addition and renovation of this building. What we have decided to do was to postpone our recommendation for approval of this contract until after we've been able to have the architect come before the public safety committee, where we can do a review. We want to ensure that the amounts that you see listed on page, pages thirteen, and, and then there's more on page one of the additions and deletions report. And what we would like to do is talk to the architect to ensure that the numbers that we're seeing here are consistent with the agreement that we had, because the format is completely different from what we had before. So we'll come before you, perhaps in January, with some explanations and corroboration that everything is, is accurate and as originally agreed upon.
Okay.
And Gloria has indicated that her willingness to contact Todd and invite him to the meeting, which will be a week from Thursday. Mark, anything to add today?
Well, I, ad hoc meeting, do you want to-
Go ahead.
At least mention, I think, the, I, I believe we'd like to form an ad hoc committee to handle the building process, so that we do have our lines of communication open, know who's going to call and do that. So if anybody has any recommendations on how to approach that, I think we should discuss that at the next public safety meeting. So if there's any input between now and then, appreciate it. I think there should be, I personally think it should be one board member, two, two citizens at large, and the village staff, department heads. Gloria Chief Wrecker and Mark Eckblad. And I have one individual who would like to do it, but if anybody knows of somebody else who may want to participate in that, that would be helpful.
All right. And your suggestion was that these meetings be held during the day, right?
No, I'm saying they may have to be held during the day.
Okay.
I think, and they maybe have to be held quickly, you know, depending on how things pop up, and I think, but as you can see now, just asking Gloria to make sure you get calls, the architect, that we should get these lines down so that we don't have to spend a lot of board time with routine things like that.
Are you at this time soliciting the public at large for nominations?
Absolutely.
Self-nominations?
Yes, somebody would like to participate, that's fine. It'd be great.
The only other change I had was actually, I want to draw your attention to the fact that we, that in the minutes, you'll notice that it says the next public safety meeting has been moved to Wednesday, December thirteenth. We have moved that back to Thursday, December fourteenth. I say back, and then I, you talk about it day four, but I return it to the originals, originally scheduled date of December fourteenth.
Okay.
And we are moving our meeting time to begin at 5:30. I know some of the meetings have been at six, or 6:30. I want to make sure everybody's aware at 5:30. Is that, okay, Mark?
All right. Okay. Kathy?
Yeah.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
And that's all I had. Super, thank you.
Can I make one Public Works comment real briefly?
Yes.
Is, just as a reminder, it's been mentioned several times, but we're, the village is going to be using exclusively salt on the streets, so we haven't had much need for salting yet, but if you don't see sand, don't call. It's not that, that the streets aren't being treated, but it's straight salt this year.
Okay. Moving on to public welfare.
Now, Mr. Ford, just between Gloria and myself, village attorney, and a couple phone calls, we clarified some of the questions the board had about the holding period spelled out in here, and also confirmed that there was no fees beyond what is in the original contract. The 127 and 137 for the holding fee for felines or canines. And I think those were the only questions.
All right, so you're going to make a motion?
I would move that we adopt the contract with Humane Society for Companion Animals in Woodbury for animal control services. And it's for a period of, yeah, it's a initial period of six months.
Calling you at a second.
Yep.
Any additional comments?
And along those lines, I wanted to mention, too, that there's a, an organization starting up in Hudson called St. Croix Animal Friends, that has been working towards building a local shelter because of not much capacity left in Woodbury, and this area desperately needs animal control facilities. They've got some great people involved in their board. They're looking for more volunteers, people interested with maybe donating land, or funds, or even just their own time. So anybody who would like to get involved, the group meets, I believe it's the first Thursday. And they do have a website, but I don't have it. I'll get you some contact information next time.
Okay.
St. Croix, where did, what did, where did you say that was?
Where?
It was in the name of-
Oh, it's St. Croix Animal Friends. They have been meeting-
Like Greta?
No. And interesting thing about the group is that they receive their nonprofit accreditation in pretty much record time. So they've, they really have their stuff together and great goals for the community.
All right, well, we have a motion to approve the agreement with the Humane Society for Companion Animals. A second. Any further comments or questions regarding that? If not, all favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
While we're in that department, can I ask a question?
Sure.
In the minutes, the parks are raked by the corrections department.
You have to-
Is that, what corrections department? Right here in the village?
No, I know.
No. Yes, that's Colleen.
Oh, Colleen?
Because we're under the same tab. I want my own tab.
You want, I think she ought to get her own tab.
We share a tab.
Do you know what, what corrections department we use?
The St. Croix County Correctional Department of the Regent.
Thank you. Okay.
As opposed to Gucci shoes.
Park Board? I'm sorry, was that all you had said?
That's it.
Go ahead, Colleen.
The signs have been purchased and will be installed in Parlayland Park for the vehicle and carers only. And we'll start working on the updated outdoor recreation plan. Will be kind of our main thing for next year.
Okay. So your next meeting will be in February?
February, after that meeting, December.
Okay, just wondered, is that it?
I, I concur with Sandy. I think Park ought to get their own tab. Yeah. I apologize.
I share.
I'm there right there.
There will be no public welfare meeting in December, correct? And the park board is canceled for February, January.
You're leaving town, wasn't you? All right, then we'll just move on to new business from the board president's comments. We've already taken care of the matter of reappointing a replacement for Darrell. Again, want to thank him, and I do have a, just a little token certificate to give him for appreciating his efforts for being the plan, plan commission chair for the last three years. Anyone who's interested in running for board trustees, the election obviously is in April. You need to file by January two. Come down, get the forms, get some signatures, it's not that many. Then turn them back in by January two. If you file after that date, you certainly, you certainly can run for office after that, then you just can't get your name on the ballot, is that right?
Correct, you write it, run as a write-in.
Run as a write-in, okay. Let's see, there is another, and I'm just, I'm just bringing up a subject which hopefully we'll talk about in January, so I don't want to get into any discussion tonight. I've had three residents, or groups of residents around the village, all dealing with basically the same issue, which is, what do we do when we've got, you know, an individual in the neighborhood who simply is not taking care of their property in a manner that is appropriate? And how do we deal with that? So I'm in the process of trying to research to see what other kinds of language or approaches have other municipalities done, so just want to make people aware of that. Because I can understand, having visited all three of them, that in terms of, you know, if it were next to me, I'd be as upset as they are. So what we're going to do is a whole other matter, but just wanted to make you aware of that. So ahead?
Well, a couple of things. I'm going to recap. First, the plan commission time has been changed back to 7:00 PM. And then I also was going to talk about the candidacy declaration papers that are due on January second. So if you're thinking of running or re-upping, please have them in by 5:00 on January second. Also, if you're, you're considering not, or you're deciding not to re-up, non-candidacy forms are due by December 22nd at 5:00 PM. And then, just to remind everyone, that we do have another election on December 12th for the school board referendum. And I just want to say again, please register ahead of time. Just because you are on the poll list in the years past does not mean that you're registered in the new state system. And we do, we, we're about 500 to 600 short, which is, is really a long ways from where we started. So I appreciate all the residents coming in early and trying to get registered to avoid the, the long lines. That's it.
Great. That's all we've got on the agenda, so the chair would entertain a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, one and all. Have a great week.